Um.
Cause I don't know if I want you to be able to sleep. If that should. I would think so, it should be one line. Just in case.
Uh, let me get your number to exist. Eight four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll be fine, except we have a few more minutes, I mean, we're recording now, you know, so. I'm just recording.
Thank you.
He's now.
What? What is it?
Hey, how are you?
Doing good.
Good, good.
I hear you, man.
Okay.
How are you?
Hey.
All right.
I'm good.
Congratulations.
Yay, how are you?
I'm good, good. Oh, fine. Yeah, how are you? Must do okay. No way, man. I'm not, you're not bad. How are you? She's not trying you. Oh.
How are you? I just wanted to add one thing. Something, something. Seems like it started out in the. It was a culture.
Right here.
It hurt. Yeah. You're in this state, you're a person. Thanks.
That's great. Who knows? Coming out of New, but maybe we don't need that night. That's really awesome. Even if you can't, your buddies. I'll be happy to have you. My thoughts will live and my did not. Oh, yeah, I got nothing in my bed catches me.
Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. Before we get started tonight, uh, I'd just like to take a second, uh, to remember Strand Trout. If you hadn't heard, he passed away last week sometime. Strand was a member of this board for eight years. He did, uh, a lot for the community. He was in numerous, numerous organizations. So he was kind of Mr. New Kent. He did a calendar every year and, uh, I can say probably nobody cared as much about the county as Strand did. So before we get started, can we take a moment of silence and then this page will lead us in prayer. To remember Strand.
Amen. Father God, we come to the sweetest, most precious name of Jesus. We come with humble and grateful hearts, dear God. Father God, we invite you into this meeting. We ask that you will instill into each one of us everything that we need to make decisions that are decisions that are pleasing unto you, decisions that are the best for the citizens of this great county. Father God, let us not, uh, forget to have a soft heart for the family of Strand Trout, Lord God. We know that you are indeed a comforter, so we ask that you will comfort his family and his friends during this time. Lord God, we also ask that you, I just stop by, I'm praying, dear God, that you will just lay your touching hand on it if it be your will. For God, we know that everything that is done according to your will and for your purpose and your plan. So, Lord God, again, we invite you into this meeting. We pray that everything that he say and do will be done in decent and order. And we will give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Uh, welcome everyone this evening. I see, uh, I think we have something going on with the special presentation, Ms. Page. I see some, uh, familiar, unfamiliar faces, or familiar faces, but unfamiliar to the county meetings, so.
I'm having people attend this, um, this is.
Okay, well, let's get started. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
All right, first item this evening is consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
If there are no changes, revisions or deletions, I believe that I'm considered agenda, we accept the answer at what our agenda is.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members, please.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Next item is the special presentation.
Good evening. Um, what an, when I see I'm excited, I'm always excited when we, as the Board of Supervisors, can show our appreciation for, um, work that is done and not done, but done in excellence. And so this evening, we had the opportunity to do that. Um, I can say that in the history of New Kent, that we have never had a Fortune five hundred company to say, "New Kent is our home." And it took an extreme amount of time, of dedication, of knowledge, of business sense, um, all of those things that I might not possess, but anyway, to get this done. And so that, um, and just to let you know that, um, for those that are recipients, they are not the only ones that worked diligently to make sure. It took the whole village to get AutoZone here. And so we are appreciative of everyone. But at this present time, I would absolutely, um, like for, uh, Mr. Starter to come, uh, forth, please. Like right here, thank you. Um, Ms. Attorney Hefty, that would be you, Brendan. He made a joke, he said, "Are y'all giving me award?" I said, "No, when we give attorneys awards, we get rid of them the next day." Um, Mr. Hathaway. And Mr. Smallnick. And so, um, so that I will not, um, so that I didn't tell a story or untruth to anybody, um, I would like for Ms. Smallnick to come forth. I didn't tell a story. Ms. Hathaway. Thank you so much. Um, and so I just want you to know that tonight, these young men will be, um, presented with awards. But even more, or just importantly, is that, uh, we know that whenever, um, your husbands are not at home and they're doing county business, that then your job elevates tremendously. So we want you to know that we are so appreciative, and Justin, please tell your wife, we are so appreciative of, um, of your understanding and your support as these fine young men are out trying to make New Kent, um, a great place to live and a great place to do business. And so the award that you receive, I ask all of the board members to come down, please. You can take it out of the box or leave it in the box. There you go. So, um, we will have presenting to, um, Mr. Hefty. We have Mr. Stee-, Supervisor Steers. We also have, um, you, you can go ahead, sir, over there. And the award will be reading as follows. Outstanding Achievement Award in appreciation of your dedication, your outstanding service, and overall contributions to the county of New Kent, Virginia. And this is dated March of twenty twenty-two. Thank you. And, um, our vice chair also has something to say. Well, just give it to, you want to come in here, sir?
No, that's why I was standing right here.
Oh.
Um, and I know these people are standing here, and Thomas is here, and they've worked really hard. But it took another big effort on the bottom of us, not to take anything away from any of these people, trust me. But it was a joint effort on all of our behalf to make this happen in New Kent County. And that's what I wanted to thank our fellow board members for that. Thank you.
And, thank you. And, um, I never want to be left out of anything, and so I'm not presenting anybody, and that's just not right for me. So I would ask Ms. Evelyn, Ms. Carrie Evelyn, if you would come forward, please. And Ms. Evelyn, I still didn't tell your husband a story. Your husband bagged me, but I'm going to tell you right now, he's going to come over there. Yeah. Your husband bagged me not to acknowledge him. Um, and so I didn't tell him I wouldn't. I just said, "I hear you bagging." So, um, so, Ms. Evelyn, everything that I said to these, um, beautiful young ladies, absolutely, we thank you and appreciate you for sharing your husbands with us, um, and, and everything that they do. And for me, for the Board of Supervisors, all of the Board of Supervisors, we voted, it was unanimous, um, Mr. Evelyn, um, that this would be done today, and we just appreciate you so much. And so with that being said, thank you. I gotta beat the photographer too. And if y'all just stand there with them, I'm gonna try to take the pictures, don't leave. Okay, go down and take the pictures. We got, we got pictures. I know this is a lobby, just get over, we have a lobby. Okay, everybody, okay, say the doctor shot. Okay. And, um, Mr. Chair, you would like to say something, sir, the floor is yours. If not, we understand.
Ms. Page, you want to get in that picture too, please?
Oh.
That's good. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Page, and, uh, I, I knew you weren't going to listen to me.
Is that true?
Yeah.
I heard you.
She wasn't, she just.
Well, like Mr. Teller said, it, it took a team. We started this thing over a year ago. And, uh, when these, when this company came in, I had a really good feeling that they were down to earth and we could believe what they were telling, telling us. They were hard negotiators, no question about that. But, uh, at the end of the day, I think we've got something New Kent's going to be proud of, uh, for all the citizens. It's going to provide, uh, great job opportunities, uh, great starting pay, and having a Fortune five hundred, three hundred company come to New Kent is, is awesome, there's no question about that. So, but, you know, all the directors in the county had a lot to do with this. From building, from Lord, the Commissioner's Revenue's Office, they had to pile up huge amounts of information to give this company. They studied every piece of this county, every inch. So, uh, I want to thank everybody down in the county, uh, for, for all the hard work and time they put into it. There's going to be a lot more work coming with this project as well. So, uh, again, thanks especially to Matt, did an awesome job. Uh, you were the leader of the teams, no question about that. So you deserve a huge round of applause again. All right, so let's move on. Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to thank our county attorney because, you know, these days you can't do much without an attorney. And, uh, I don't know if you know the difference between a good lawyer and a great lawyer. A good lawyer knows the law and a great lawyer knows the judge. And I agree, I love a great lawyer. Just want to thank you.
What?
Miss Shepherd, are we there?
Next, next is the citizens' comment period. Anyone signed up?
Yeah.
We have one person signed up. When you, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes. First, Ms. Isabel White Jarvis.
I'm Isabel White Jarvis from Barrensville, been here all my life. I was here to comment on that drug rehab place. We don't need it in our county, we don't need it in Barrensville. And we're all opposing it. And we hope you all would reconsider it. Because seems like down that end, we don't get anything that's worth having. You forget us completely. And we don't want it. Not only that, the neighbors that are close to it don't want it either. And we shouldn't have to have that. So I hope you will reconsider it and, and think about a better use for that place. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else signed up? I'll close citizens' comment period. Next is the residency administrators' report. Mr. Wynn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This past month, we had, uh, thirty-six work orders completed, forty-three, and had three after hour callouts. Been working on pothole patching, shoulder repair, pipe replacement, litter pickup, those types of things. We're working on a big project right now on Stage Road with some ditching and pipe replacement on that road. Um, also had a meeting last week, a pre-con, that, um, Sheriff McLaughlin was, uh, in attendance and Chief Opet, uh, concerning the one fifty-five trench widening and paving project that's going to start on March twenty-first. Um, there was a few comments made about, uh, two-week look ahead, and, and that, that information is going to be forwarded to the sheriff and Chief Opet, and I will, I will share that information with Mr. Hathaway as well. Uh, basically, it's a trench widening, uh, and it starts about eight, nine tenths south of Kentland Trail. They go skip that area between Kentland Trail and the, uh, northern area where the ramps are, and then pick it back up from that point and go all the way to two forty-nine. So that project has a, um, like I say, a start date of March twenty-first, they have a hundred and eighty days to complete it. Hopefully, they'll get it done a whole lot faster than that. But we go, we go make sure that, you know, Fire EMS, Sheriff's Department, all y'all know what the schedule is. So the contractor agreed and the CM agreed to, uh, share a two-week look ahead every two weeks for that project. Other than that, I don't have anything else. I know, uh, Mr. Lockwood, you shared something about, uh, that pipe issue over there on, uh, Route six hundred and two seventy-three. That'll be taken care of this, by the end of this week. Um, other than that, I really don't have anything else to, to share with y'all unless y'all have some questions for me.
Mr. Steers?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Wynn, you said the project on one fifty-five was going to start, what, just south of Kentland Trail?
Supposed to start about nine tenths south of Kentland Trail.
What about the section from Kentland Trail all the way down to Old Forge Road? What about that section? Is that not?
That, that's not included in that.
It's not included?
No, it's a smart scale project, um, from what I understand. Haven't seen the plan, so, but it's going all the way to two forty-nine. I don't know if Mr. Hathaway have any more information, but, uh, I do know that, uh, the contractor that's doing the work is, is a real good contractor that we, you know, every, every con- construction folks deals with all the time. And they will do their best to, uh, complete this job as quickly as possible. We will work around anything that has to do with Rosies or any events, that sort of thing. So if, if, if y'all know of any events coming up in, you know, in Rosies or at the, uh, racetrack, let us know and I can share that with the, uh, construction team.
Okay. Uh, and then the only other minor thing is I have requests for crosswalks in, uh, Brickshire on Killen Trail. Two crosswalks have faded and they need to be repainted, if you could get that on your schedule.
I will get with the pavement, the traffic engineering crew that does that work.
Okay, thank you, sir. And do you have any updates on any upcoming road projects, like possibly repaving Rock Oak Road?
Yeah, I'll share, I'll send that information out on a separate email to Mr. Hathaway where he can share that with everybody.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Ms. Tiller?
Just a couple potholes at the end of Route six twelve where it ties into terminal.
Okay.
There's some right there, if you come down the hill and turn right heading back, there's some really bad ones right there.
Okay.
Um, and the next question, I guess, would be, any updates on the traffic study in Bottoms Bridge Corridor?
On two forty-nine?
On sixty.
On sixty, no. I, I don't have any more information on that.
That's all.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Lockwood?
Uh, Mr. Wynn, I just wanted to express my appreciation for you, uh, and the crew being out there at Gotten's Pond, getting prepared for that repair that's going through on that spillway. Um, any updates at this point on timing? I know they were talking somewhere between first and middle of April.
Yeah, I will, I will get with the bridge crew and, and get that information to you because that, that's the last thing I heard, first part of April, middle of April.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be putting up message boards and that sort of thing prior to, a couple of weeks prior to.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Page? I don't have anything, thank you, Mr. Wynn.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
All right. I would like to give a shout out to my parents, thank y'all for coming tonight. And my, and my oldest son's at home from college, so thank y'all for coming tonight. And my precious wife. First item tonight is Thrive Virginia update. Mr. Barney?
So, can I move back and forth through the slide, or do I have to? What's the best way to do this? Just click? I'm gonna need a clicker, I think. All right, can I go? Okay, gotcha. Thank you, Ronnie. Now it has disappeared from the screen again. Let's see if we can work it down. I apologize, guys, I'm having... Well, I figured I might be off to a rough start when half the crowd left before I started. Well... Don't move it off the... You guys said I have an hour and a half, right, to do this?
You will be locked up.
You know what? I'm gonna do this a different way, because I want to be mindful of your time. And you guys have received the meeting, or, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint. So, I'm gonna make sure I have everything up where I need to see it, and I'll just talk through some of the items. It's probably okay, but thank you, Ronnie. Okay, so, hey, guys, my name is Chris Napier, and I am the Chief Operations Officer at Thrive Virginia. I know you guys were expecting Ms. Gillian Barney, but she had a death in the family, so she's not with us this evening. But some of you know me, but for those of you who do not, I've been with the agency a little over eight years, and I've served in a variety of capacities. And tonight, I'm gonna talk to you guys a little bit about how we serve the citizens of New Kent County and how you guys can best support us. So, I think before I begin, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we have certainly had some struggles in our leadership for the last couple of years. But despite some of the difficulties that we've had, we've continued to do really amazing work with the staff that we have, and I'm really proud of them. And I could talk tonight about the mission, if you move to the next slide, Ronnie, please. I can talk about the mission or about the methodology, but what I really want you guys to hear tonight, while I have a couple of minutes with you, is that our goal, and my take-home point for you, is that our goal is to disrupt the cycle of poverty and contribute to the long-term healthy outcomes of New Kent citizens, ranging from housing to workforce development to healthy relationships to food security to positive parenting. Those are our core focuses with the programs that we're providing in the county right now. And, sorry, go back one. Thank you. So, as you guys can see, I will point out, we do have a $2.5 million budget. We currently have 25 team members, and we're serving around 2,000 customers annually. And that's across our entire nine-county and two-city service area. You can move to Slide 6, would probably be good. Go ahead and, yeah, next one. All right, thank you. And I think we can talk about, again, methods, best practice, but here, I'll let the data talk a little bit for itself here in New Kent County. The agency invests approximately $400,000 annually into New Kent County, and that's across staffing, program services, client service expenses that we provide. In this past year, in FY '21, we served 509 individuals in New Kent County. So, that's about 25% of our entire caseload exists here in New Kent. We were fortunate enough to have funding that allowed us to provide over $43,000 in emergency financial services to the citizens of New Kent, and we currently have five board members that are county residents. Please move to the next slide. Yeah, let's move to the next. So, you guys might ask, here I am saying we have a $2.5 million budget. We were able to put $400,000 into the county. Why would I be here? Or how could you guys, why would you need to help financially? And I suppose what I'd say to you guys is, most of the funding that we do have is federal funding. And while we can help the citizens of New Kent, the guidelines are really rigid around how we can help. So, the support that we get from New Kent County allows us to be flexible and creative with the clients that we serve. And it allows us to match our federal and state match requirements, and also allows us to continue to provide all of our services free of charge. Can you move on one more? The last thing I wanted to add is that, right now, just to list the services, we provide a domestic violence intervention and prevention program. We provide a housing and financial counseling service. We provide an in-home visitation program with our Healthy Families program. And we also have an emergency financial services program, which all residents of New Kent County are eligible for. So, I would conclude tonight with, I hope that you guys can find it in your hearts or find it in our data to support us financially through our programming. But should we not make it into the FY '23 budget, my commitment is to you guys over the next year to get to know you in this new capacity that I serve in. So, I plan on knocking on some doors, knocking on some doors soon, Ms. Page, Mr. Hathaway. And we'll provide, we'll continue to provide the most optimal services we possibly can to the citizens of New Kent. So, I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening. Next item, Arts Alive Annual Report. Ms. Coles?
Hello. I'm not used to answering questions. I'm used to asking questions. Are you gonna click for me too, right? Okay, I'm not gonna, because you have it in the packet. I just want to thank you for having me here to represent Arts Alive as New Kent, as part of a regional arts program that we have. And I also want to thank you for letting me represent you, New Kent County. Mr. Davis gave me this job about 10 years ago. I did not know what I was getting into, but I have loved it, I enjoy it, and I wish that I could see all of you come to some of our events. You're certainly welcome there. On the next one, you're on the visual, I can just go back. My order was different. The Visual Arts Workshop, okay, we'll start with the scholarships, since most of the scholarship money went to New Kent kids. We give a scholarship there. Magnolia Lang got the big one there. And then we had two at the bottom that were for visual arts from New Kent County, and they got scholarships to use at college. They were all, you know, seniors going to college. All right, whatever one you want. Okay, the Visual Arts Workshops, these are something that we have where the people come in and do artwork, or the, some of my things really out of sync with you, but that's okay, that they do crafts, paintings, and so forth. And we have people that teach them locally. Some come from the Fine Arts in Ford in Richmond. And we have, they also use exhibits. If some of you are artists here in New Kent County, seven exhibits were put up with the performances that we had. The workshops were done with 12 to 15 people working there to have a good time, but also to produce artworks. All right, what's next? Community highlights. Well, this was really big for New Kent last year, because we got the Fine Arts Museum, the traveling one that's going across the state. And we got them, they were in West Point first, and then we got them in New Kent last year. And we were real excited about it, and they loved it here. They just thought this was a great place to come. We're trying to get it into King William, so we're trying to get the arts all over the state of Virginia. And this respect. Okay. All right, keep going. You haven't got to the good part yet. That's it? Well, have y'all got your packets? All right, if you've got your packets, now that was the first page, okay, now you can go. Should be, next should be onstage performances, series. Well, if not, I can go through that. See the little guys over there dancing and singing? Okay, we had, we usually have five shows a year, and we've had our five for the past year. But we also have two more coming up in March and April, which we hope maybe some of you will come to, that were rescheduled when we had to shut down year before last. So, this has been quite an effort to get these people to come back when they were scheduled two years ago. And we have, well, some of you young guys, it's probably not stuff for you so much, but we older people really love. The John Denver guy, he looked just like John Denver. He sounded just like John Denver. We've had people like the Jersey, looked like the Jersey Boys. We've had Sons and Sarah Dip, if you've ever heard of, they are fantastic. They did a Christmas special, and oh, those guys can sing. Coming up, go on to the next one. We've got, this is coming up next year. We've got these five coming up, and it's a really good deal. And we're, like I said, we're always wanting y'all to come and join us. And they even have the Everly Brothers kind of coming, and us, like Jackie Wilson. You know, if you don't know who these people are, you won't know that they're not the real people. So, you would enjoy this. It says offerings like these are close to home and especially valuable to a rural community. We're so much cheaper than Richmond, and we're a lot cheaper than Norfolk and Hampton Roads. All right, Seasoned Subscribers, how do we, next one. We had 388 Seasoned Subscribers last year, 110 from New Kent, which is a little over 28%. And that, and it says we're grateful with the support that y'all give us all the time as we had to go through some difficult times here. All right, Summer Art Camp. I think your kids have been, right? Summer Art Camp, so we've had Evelyn over there, I know. We have quite a few. We've had 105 campers last year, which was really low for us, but 42 of them were from New Kent. And this year's camp will be June 27th to July 1st, and kids have a great time. They get into the visual arts, the crafts, they love the drama, they love to dance, they love to sing. People have learned to play the piano in a week and the guitar in a week. It's amazing. And so many of these kids will continue with that when they leave us. Then we've got the Missoula Drama Camp, which is in August. And this is a group that comes in, 51 campers. Last year, 19 of them from New Kent. And they have professional staff to come in, and we pay them, and they do a theater production, and they present it to the community. And this year, they're going to be doing Johnny Appleseed in August, August 1st of August. And I do believe we could do the scholarship and everything, and that's it. And thank you for having me, and hope to see y'all. Come on out. Our Beach Boys are gonna be with us in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coles.
All right.
Item 3, FY '23, County Administrator's Budget Report. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In front of you, you should have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll go over tonight, summarizing my recommendation for the FY '23 budget. Our plan was to give you the actual budget packets on Friday at your budget retreat. And for the public, that retreat has been rescheduled to Thursday, March 24th, 9 o'clock. Location is the ordinary, right across the street. But I will make sure that you still get your detailed budget packets on Friday. We will get those to you. It's something about this location. All right, the FY '23 proposed budget totals $90,462,839. That is the total budget. That is an increase from the FY '22 budget that totaled $80,712,330. And I will go over how we got to that roughly almost $10 million increase in our budget. I'd also like to say the value of a penny. Each penny on our tax rate increased this year from about $330,000 to $390,722. Therefore, every penny on our tax rate generates $390,722. The proposed rate that you have before you changes our current tax rate from 79 cents to 69 cents. That is actually a 3-cent tax increase that is being proposed. This year is a reassessment year, as we all know, and by law, the county is required to equalize the rate, meaning that with the new assessments, the county can't generate more than 1% of what we've generated previously. And in order to do that, we would have to equalize our rate to 66 cents. Basically, that generates the same amount of income that we created last year. This whole budget that I'm about to run through basically has three goals. This budget is focused on addressing the rising cost of delivering services to the community. It's focused on our personnel needs, our staffing needs, and it's focused on our salary needs for the county. This spreadsheet, which we'll go in much more detail during the budget retreat, but I did want to show this spreadsheet, because it really gives a great summary of the increase from $80 million, which was our budget total last year, to $90,462,839. I'm gonna focus this evening on the general fund, which reflects an increase of 5,000, I mean, $5,125,224. The general fund is what's supported by our real estate tax, personal property tax, and various fees and state funding that we receive. The other items below, you can see some areas increased, some decreased. The county really doesn't have a lot of control over these areas, where these are mostly federal and state formulas for funding that we receive from the federal government and the state government as well. This slide, the next slide represents a breakdown of our budget and how are our funds allocated within our budget. It may look like a shocker to see the school board budget being roughly half of our budget, but really, this is commonplace for most localities, where school boards are around 50% of a locality's budget. Ours is just under 50%. Public safety being the next area of spending of $12.9 million. Debt service, $8.6 million. Administration consists of the various other departments of the county that we fund. I don't think there's anything in our allocation of funding that is really out of line or different from many localities across the state. As I stated, I was, I plan to focus on the $5,115,224 of additional general fund revenues that we anticipate receiving in FY '23. Those revenues come from personal property taxes. We are anticipating an additional $3,477,651. We are anticipating an additional $3,477,651, which is a huge number compared to previous years. Part of this number, though, comes from our conservative budgeting from this current budget. You know, in years past, we've been used to seeing about $5,000 to $700,000 of additional personal property tax. Last year, we were a little shocked because that number was much greater. And that was the first number, first time we seen such an increase. So therefore, we did not budget about $750,000 of what was projected, just to make sure that we hit our mark on the budget. Glad to say that last year, not only did we hit our mark, we exceeded that mark. So I feel very comfortable with what's projected here with the 300, $3.4 million. And that includes the $750,000 that wasn't budgeted previously. This number does not reflect an increase of our personal property tax rate. Our personal property tax rate is being recommended to remain level. What this number reflects is growth, more vehicles, which is anticipated with more residents moving to the county, and higher assessed values of personal property. Many of us have tried to purchase or have seen the price of used vehicles today or new vehicles as well. And that reflects that increase in value. Also, we anticipate about $1.1 million, primarily from the 3-cent tax rate increase that is being proposed. That's how much additional revenue, the 3-cent, recommended 3-cent tax rate would generate. I'm glad to report that we are seeing a healthy increase in our sales and use tax, which is an indication of a very strong economic environment. Our Safer Grant, we're showing a negative $308,614. Next year, we will receive no more Safer Grant funding for the 12 fire and rescue staff that we received the initial grant for. Therefore, without the grant continuing, the county will have an additional commitment of $308,614 for next fiscal year to continue the 12 firefighter positions. Recordation tax, another indication of growth. As new homes are being developed, new lots are being subdivided, new lots are being recorded. When those lots are recorded, there is a tax that is collected by the clerk of courts, and we receive a portion of that back. And we're projecting another increase in our recordation tax. Our business license tax, we're seeing a healthy increase. Our mils tax as well. We're projecting a healthy increase in our mils tax for next fiscal year. The only decrease that you'll see here is the grantor's tax. And that is because of state code, actually. There was, the Virginia General Assembly eliminated that tax from localities and actually funneled the majority of that to the Hampton Roads Transportation Authority for transportation projects that are underway and that are planned. So it's not because of a lack of growth or initiative on our part. It's because of code changes at the state level. Compensation board funding, we're projecting an increase in that. That's the state funding that we receive to fund certain positions, mainly positions that work under our constitutional officers. And we're also projecting a slight decrease in consumer utility tax, permits and fees, interest. A lot of these items, we don't have a lot of control over. There's a state formula as to how we receive those funds. But that is a breakdown of the additional general fund revenues that we're projecting for next fiscal year. Allocation of those new revenues, these are the new expenditures that I am proposing, that I'm sure we will have a lot of additional discussion during our, during our budget retreat. The first item, school board transfer. I'm proposing an additional $2 million to go towards school operations. And that's 2 million above what they received last year. Transfer to school board, well, the next two line items, the transfer to school board and contingency decrease, are really offsetting revenues. So it really has no impact on the $5.1 million. But those two line items are to fund the new elementary school that is currently under construction. As you know, we have carried a set aside to fund the operating cost for the new elementary school. So we're showing the operating cost for next fiscal year as the school is scheduled to open. But we're also showing that being offset by our set aside that we currently have. That total is 1.4 million. We actually allocated about $625,000 in this current budget so that the schools could begin the hiring process in preparation for the new school year. The next item is contingency increase. This is a set aside for the salary study that is underway. We do not have the results of that salary study as of yet. We're anticipating getting that in early April. But I am proposing that we set aside funding to address the results of that salary study that's being conducted for all county staff positions. And I'm recommending a set aside of $1.2 million. The next item is personnel actions, which I will go over in the next slide, my personnel recommendations for new positions for next fiscal year. But the total of those costs total $1,021,301. Transfer to debt service to fund PNI. Actually, this will be discussed in the public hearing that's coming up next. This is for the three capital projects in the general fund. This does not include the one public utilities project that we'll also be considering debt service financing in the next agenda item. Those capital projects, as you are aware, includes the construction of a new animal shelter, the renovation of the historic school, which is the original high school, the 1930s high school. And it also includes the construction of a new fire station to replace Fire Station Number Four. Total debt service for those three projects is $1,040,953. That's the annual cost to the county for the borrowing of approximately $16 million to fund those three projects. We did a refunding last year, and there are some other debt reductions as well as we continue to pay down debt. But we have recognized the debt savings in our existing debt of $64,744. Therefore, the total commitment for those three new projects is not, annual commitment is $976,209. As you are aware, I am proposing to set aside 2% of the mils tax revenues to offset that debt service. And that 2% totals $591,880. Therefore, there's about $380,000 additional funds that would be needed and that is proposed to come out of the $5.1 million to cover the three projects. The next item is IT. We are proposing the replacement of our servers, some of our servers that runs our county networks, all of our servers and IT equipment is on a replacement schedule. That schedule is based on the length of time that we can get warranties for the equipment that we own. And we do have some servers that are coming up for replacement totaling $159,730. Non-major capital items, which include voting equipment, a gator, utility vehicle, and that's actually for our general services department, and various other maintenance items totaling $71,125 for fire and rescue. We've budgeted additional funds for an increase in fuel, cost of equipment, and high call volume. We all know that fuel is a big issue right now and something that we're watching closely, definitely as to how it impacts our budget. We're hoping that the spikes that we're seeing is a short term. But that is something that we are continuing to monitor. General services refuse. We are anticipating an increase in the cost for our trash, our landfills. And it's not just next year. We anticipate some additional increases in outgoing years, too. In fact, our general services director is gonna be coming before you at our work session this month to give you some more detailed information on the rising cost of operating our landfill sites and with some recommendations that we've been working through on ideas and ways that we can save some money in operating our landfills while still keeping that service free to our residents. Heritage Public Library, we are proposing to fully fund their request, which is for an additional $39,092. The majority of this cost is to address the minimum wage mandates of the state. Economic development, we are looking at some additional software. The cost is $30,000. This will assist us with project recruitment, especially with targeting certain industrial and commercial sectors and outreach to those sectors. Hanover Health District really is a fee that we have very little control over. The health department tells us how much our annual bill is each month. Again, they have a formula for determining that, but they have given us our, our bill for next year, which is an increase of $25,762. And there's some other minor increases that are shown here with our general services buildings and grounds. You know, as we grow in our facilities, so does the cost to maintain those facilities as well. Our county attorney, there is a projected increase, a contract increase of $20,000 for that. We've not increased that contract in some time. Therefore, I feel that an increase is definitely fair, and they do a great job for us as well. And then we have some other various increases totaling $19,638. And we are looking at some software purchases for anti-malware. I think we can all attest to the number of junk emails that we get through our county email system on a daily basis. And we've looked at some software that we believe will reduce that amount of traffic. This is a summary of how I am recommending that that additional $5.1 million be allocated. Proposed personnel actions totaling $1,021,301. Our benefit rate increase, our VRS retirement is increasing by $233,803. Unfortunately, this is a rate we have very little control over. The state gives us this rate each year. Overtime increases, we're anticipating to be $118,403. And I want to address this because it's not that the department's planning on going crazy with overtime hours. That is not the case. We've had a change in our personnel policy, which has led to the overtime policy, well, anticipated increases in overtime, which is an additional cost in the short term. But we think overall, it will be a cost savings to the county. What we did is we actually eliminated comp time for individuals. Many of you may have recalled, I guess it was beginning of last year, when we ended up paying out comp time that was on our books. Some of that comp time was on our books for over 10 years that employees had accumulated. And with comp time, you have to pay it out. And you can't, you can't not pay it out because we've carried it for a specific time, like we do with annual leave. You have a year to use it or you lose it. You can't do that with comp time because it is earned time. Employees have worked to earn that time. So therefore, they can use it whenever they choose. And that was just carrying the liability on our books. So we're proposing to eliminate comp time, which we do anticipate an increase in our, in our overtime as a result of that. A 5% COLA, a cost of living increase, is in the General Assembly's budget. I won't say that it's adopted yet. I don't believe the budget has been adopted yet by the General Assembly. But the 5% COLA increase is in, currently in the draft budget for the state. This will go to constitutional officers, Department of Social Services, the registrar, and elected board members. Now, with that 5%, there's gonna be some offsetting revenues with that. We will receive additional revenues to fund that 5%. It's not the state's mandating the counties to pay it out of our funds. It's actually built into our revenues. New positions, animal control sergeant. There was an upgrade that occurred mid-FY '22. For the animal control, we promoted an existing staff member to a sergeant position, utilizing existing funds within the sheriff's budget. This year, we will have to budget for that position, and the total cost is $74,076. I am also recommending a new patrol deputy, a base salary of $49,184. Total cost, well, cost with benefits is $71,320. And I pause with total cost because the true total cost of a new deputy is about $153,000 once you add the new vehicle, equipment, and all of the necessary to support that position. Fire and rescue, I am recommending creating a new position within the fire and rescue department, and that's a lieutenant position. In fact, 12 lieutenant positions within the fire and rescue department. These would be upgrades of promotions of existing staff members. So we're not increasing the number of staff, but we are changing the positions. By creating the lieutenant position, it creates another level of upward mobility for our fire rescue staff. You now have the fire and rescue firefighter. You'll have the lieutenant. And then you'll have the captain position before you move into upper administration. One of, and one of the reasons I've supported this, one of the biggest things that I've heard from firefighters as they have moved on from New Kent County was the lack of opportunity for advancement. It's been so often that once you're a firefighter for New Kent, you're a firefighter. It's been so often that once you're a firefighter for New Kent, you're a firefighter pretty much through your entire career because there's very limited opportunities for captain and then chief. Whereas you can go to a larger locality, City of Richmond, Henrico, Hanover, where they have various positions within the firefighting ranks and various opportunities for advancement. So not only do I think this will assist us with our daily operations, but I think it will also provide some opportunities for upward mobility within our staff and hopefully address some of our retention issues. Human Resources, I am requesting a new HR and Safety Coordinator position. Total cost to that is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The Commissioner of Revenue has requested, and I am recommending as well, a new Tax Program Administrator. That cost is sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. I am recommending a new Environmental Planner position, and it's not really a new position, actually. Really funding a position that's already on our books. When Mr. Stoddard was promoted to Assistant County Administrator, Josh Baragi, who was an environmental planner, was promoted to the Director position, and we did not fill an environmental planner position. I am recommending that we do fill that now, and that recommendation is based on the amount of construction and development activity that we have going on in the county. That department is extremely busy right now. Parks and Rec Programmer position, a Recreation Specialist is being recommended. Total cost fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. And then there's been various FY-23 adjustments totaling sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Those various adjustments, the majority of those adjustments are due to the state's minimum wage requirements. Also, I'm recommending that we upgrade a part-time Administrative Assistant position to a full-time position with a total cost of forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. A new Utility Specialist position in the Public Utilities Department is being recommended. We have a new Transportation Planner position that we are in the process of advertising and hiring for. We have a couple of position upgrades in the Public Utilities Department, CSA, our Children's Service Act, and adjustment to the Director's salary, and a part-time Administrative Assistant, which is actually being paid for by Charles City. But we're the financial officer for this position, and we'll be billing Charles City for those costs. Those costs are because we're now handling Charles City's Children's Services Act program. And then there's other funds regarding VRS retirement rates with a total cost of thirty-seven thousand and eighty-four dollars. And then Social Services, they have one part-time position upgrade. Many of you know Nancy Goodman that retired this past year. She worked with us on a part-time basis. I think we all know, if you know Nancy, having Nancy on a part-time basis with her years of experience is just as good as having anybody full-time. We don't have that luxury now, so we are requesting to upgrade a part-time position, her part-time position, to full-time. Employee Compensation and Benefits, I've mentioned the one-point-two million dollars for the salary set aside. We're anxiously awaiting to receive the results of the salary study and anticipate that coming in early April. Health Insurance Rates, no increase for employees are being proposed, although I would like to add, we actually received a three percent decrease in our insurance premiums, which is the first time in a very long time that we've received this. Now, those insurance rates, premiums that were quoted each year goes up and goes down and goes up and goes down. So I'm proposing to hold it steady for employees at this time. As you know, for the past three years, they've went up, and we've absorbed those costs and have not passed it on to employees. And I have a sneaking suspicion, too, that our contract is coming up with our current health care, health insurance provider, and we're looking at putting that out to bid next year. So of course, they'll give us a sweet rate to keep us on board, and then the following year, they'll increase it again and make up what we've lost out on, what they've lost out on this year, too. And just because the rates go up and down, I feel comfortable withholding the employee's contribution steady for this year. VRS Retirement Rate, an increase of thirteen point oh-seven percent. Health Credit Rate, no change, no increases projected. Our VRS Group Life Insurance, a small increase of one-point-one-nine percent. And we are still waiting on our VML Auto Insurance, our Liability Insurance, and Workman Comp renewals, which we usually don't get those till mid-April, sometimes early May, but those should be coming soon. Capital Projects, I've been over the capital projects. I've presented on those, so I won't go over those, other than to say that our total CIP for next fiscal year is planned for four-point-nine million dollars. That funding, three-point-four, roughly three-point-five of that comes from our CIP cash reserves. A hundred thousand comes from proffers that we are receiving, and one-point-three million dollars will come from state and federal grants. Our Public Utility Fund, Water and Sewer Rates, I am proposing no change to our current rates. Connection Availability Fees for next fiscal year, I'm proposing no change for that. And I'm glad, because when I first became county administrator, it seemed like, and previous, prior to that as well, it seemed like every year there was an eight percent increase, and we've been able to stabilize that and have been able to flatten that rate. Actually, last two years, we were able to do a minor decrease to the rates. Bottoms Bridge Service District Tax Rate, I'm proposing a five-cent reduction to our Bottoms Bridge Avalor rate, which would change the rate from ten cents to five cents. FY-23 Public Utilities Budget Totals nine-point-six million dollars, an increase from eight-point-one in this current year's budget. And then Capital Projects totaling three-point-three million dollars, which is an increase of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars from our current capital budget. I've been over the capital, capital projects for public utilities as well, so I won't go over those individually. And for the public, the reason we break the two capital projects out and the two budgets out, the Public Utilities Budget and the other county budget, is because our public utilities expenditures, all of their budgets, are solely funded through fees and rates. There's no tax dollars, no real estate dollars, no personal property revenue dollars that go into the operation of our Public Utilities Department. What's Next? Next is our Budget Retreat, where we will go into the summary I provided in much more detail. That retreat, that date has changed from this Friday, the eighteenth, to Thursday, March twenty-fourth, starting at nine a.m. In order to be in compliance with state code and to meet our budget schedule, there is a public hearing planned for April eleventh on the tax rate. I am recommending today that we advertise the three-cent tax increase. That does not lock you into a three-cent tax increase. It only means you can't go higher once it's advertised, but you can adopt a lower tax rate if you so choose. For timing's sake, actually, I believe notices are due to the paper this Friday for the April public hearing, so I am recommending that we advertise the three-cent tax increase. Real Estate Tax Increase, to be clear. We are planning for a budget, a public hearing on the general budget on May ninth by state code. We have to wait, I believe, ten days before we can adopt the budget, and I'm proposing that you consider the budget for adoption at your May work session on May twenty-fifth. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any questions? I'm sure we're going to have plenty at the retreat, so we're going to go ahead and advertise the three cents tax increase.
Yes.
And we can, so the public knows we can come down from that, we just can't go any higher.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next, Public Facilities Lease Revenue Bond, Series twenty-twenty-two, Resolution R-ten-dash-twenty-two. Mr. Segal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You have the resolution before you. I'll be glad to go through more detail, but basically, as we talked about, excuse me, in the last meeting, we had a bunch of proposals. The best proposal was from Webster Bank on this particular part of the financing. It provides for six, up to sixteen million, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the various projects, which include all the ones we've talked about before, the historic school, the litany, the fire station. And these, this resolution really has, you've seen this before, this has, we're doing this through the EDA financing, so there'll be the traditional documents, that there's a ground lease, a lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an assignment of the leases to the bank, and then the actual bond itself. Those documents are actually, the bond is actually done by the EDA, and the EDA will meet later this week to deal with the same financing, depending on your results tonight. The interest rate on this for the twenty-year financing is two-point-six-five, I believe, and I'll be glad, again, to go through details, but I don't know how much detail you would like on this.
We went through pretty much all the detail at our last meeting, unless anybody else has anything.
It's a great financing for twenty years, so as we all talked about, it's
Right. Good. Anybody comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt Resolution R-ten-dash-twenty-two to approve the Public Facilities Lease Revenue Bond, Series twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, will we poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Guess you can stay right there.
I think I'll be back once we do the public hearing. I don't know if you want to go directly into that or
We're going to go right into the public hearing.
Okay.
It's after seven. So we have one public hearing tonight. Water and Sewer Revenue Bond, Series twenty-twenty-two, Resolution R-oh-nine-dash-twenty-two. Your voice.
Great. I'll just do a quick presentation, and then if there's anybody who wants to comment on the public hearing. The, here, we're doing the utility project. We tried to do it as broad as possible so that it could deal with a number of utility projects, but basically with the biosolids, so we're trying to deal with that, that issue that's being designed as we, I guess as we speak, it probably will be a short while before it's actually in process. This is, this resolution was dealing with up to nine million of bonds. It's, it's with C and F Bank, so local bank, they gave you a great deal. It's prepayable at any time, in whole or in part. Although if you prepay it with another, say, lender within the first three years, then there's a one percent prepayment penalty. If you paid it with cash, there's no prepayment penalty. And of course, after that three-year period, it's totally prepayable without any penalty. This is going to be on parity with a lot of the sewer and water debt that we already have outstanding. The VRA is the bondholder for all of that debt right now, so we'll be getting their consent to the parity, but basically, the revenue will be, all that stream will be pledged toward all the bonds, which include this new C and F bond. And again, this is twenty-year financing. It's a pretty, and again, pretty incredible rate. I think it's two-point-two-seven percent, which is remarkable. The resolution before you, we had a couple of changes, I think, on the resolution from, sorry, we, those were, that was in the other resolution, but anyway, this is all set for your approval as needed, so I'll be, again, I'll be glad to go through the detail if you'd like, but otherwise, it's ready, Mr. Chairman.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up? No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing. Well, I definitely think we probably made the right decision not waiting on the interest rates on that other program, so, yeah. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Segal? Not all, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt Resolution R-oh-nine-dash-two-two, authorizing the issuance and sale of up to nine million dollars. Principal amount of a water and sewer revenue bond and providing for the form, details, and payment thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any other discussion? None. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Chairman, thank you very much, and we'll coordinate with you and staff the closing.
Okay. Sounds good. That was the only public hearing this evening, so we'll go into elected officials' reports. Mr. Steers?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Lockwood?
I just want to thank the community for coming out on Saturday. We had a wonderful day, a sunny, bright, warm day for our county recycling event in the wet snow, and it was horrible, but it was, it was wonderful. I especially want to thank Ms. Page. I think she's thawed by now, but we had a great turnout, the volunteers and members of the Clean County Committee, county staff, and it just was a great day. We, we got rid of tons of paper that were shredded, tons of electronics that were hauled away, and we filled the trailer, forty-foot tractor trailer, from ceiling to floor, front to end, by ten-thirty in the morning. I've never seen so many tires in my life, or lifted so many tires in my life, but it was a great day. We got rid of almost all the tires that came in, were dragged out of the woods or off the side of the road, so that's a whole bunch of tires that are no longer unsightly along our roadway. So again, I just want to thank everybody that contributed, everybody that brought stuff out to get rid of, and I look forward to us doing maybe a more frequent event because it was very well received by the public as well, so thank you.
Lame, Ms. Lockwood? Ms. Page?
Oh, yes, sir. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank all of our to, um, thank I, all of our citizens that have been helping in the efforts to widen I sixty-four, twenty-nine miles through New Kent County. When you talk to somebody and it's like, okay, so how much could it be? Well, it's to the tune of over seven hundred, over seven hundred million dollars. So we're hopeful for certain House bills and Senate bills that have not been decided upon right now. They have a conference committee that's, um, talking about the, um, the budget for the Senate in order to get that done. But, um, thank you for the letter writing, and just continue to write letters to, um, not only our representatives, but to all the representatives, especially those that come from the Hampton and Peninsula area. They have to travel I sixty-four to get to Richmond, and so thank you for that. Something else that's gonna be coming up, and it has been near and dear to my heart since before two thousand and six. New Kent will have Relay for Life this year. We have not had it in four years, and I almost wanted to take the blame for that, but, um, in doing my job as, or trying to do my job as a board supervisor, it was just a lot on my plate. However, I can tell you that when I heard the COVID numbers over the past year, I sit down and shook my head because it was nothing compared to our annual amount of over one point eight million people that are diagnosed with cancer. I can also tell you that it was nothing compared to an average of six hundred and forty-seven thousand people that die every year for cancer. So we absolutely cannot not fight for a cure for cancer. I am a breast cancer survivor, and my commitment to life itself is to help anyone and everyone that, that I can. And it has been way too many people that have called me and said, we have to do Relay. So we have to do Relay, and we're gonna do Relay right now, it's planned for June the eighteenth at Colonial Downs. It will be a much smaller version. We will not be out there all night long, because Ms. Page is old. However, um, we will be raising funds for services that can be rendered to help so many through the American Cancer Society. And also, um, every, every year, there are new cures, there are new treatments to help people live longer with cancer or to cure cancer. And so we know that there is a cure, and we are not gonna stop fighting until, um, everyone that hears that you have cancer, they will follow up by saying, but we have a cure. And so it is, um, it's something that has touched each and every one of us, not just my life, but each and every one of us. And I'm telling you, if you don't have a friend or neighbor or family member that has been diagnosed, sadly enough, I can tell you that in the next year, you will. And that is, um, that is sad news, but the good news is, we never give up. We never give up. So we'll ask you to join in that fight. I sit on the Central Virginia Waste Management Association, and one of the biggest issues we have is plastic. What do you do with plastic? Well, thank goodness and thanking the New Kent Lions Club, which, um, I believe Supervisor Steers is a part of that group. They collect plastic bags, they make benches out of them, but even more important, they keep them out of the landfills and out of the murs that cause the machinery to break down. And so, um, thanking the Lions Club and all of their efforts to, um, to, um, get rid of plastic and, um, especially plastic bags. And, Mr. Chair, I can tell you that, um, I am just full and happy that we had the opportunity as a board supervisor to recognize some of our staff. It is absolutely my prayer that as our staff continues to step up and work in excellence, that we will take that opportunity at future meetings to recognize our own, because, um, in New Kent, we are the best at what we do. And so, um, and I thank you on behalf of my coworkers for allowing us to do that this evening, sir. And, um, there will be many more to come, and, and thank everyone that joined in, and not only our staff, but our, the families of our staff, which is huge. I teased Brendan to tell him if he got an award, that we probably would be getting rid of their firm. And then I saw the budget, so it's probably, it's probably gonna go. But, uh, anyway, all jokes aside, and thank you to, uh, Attorney Hefty for all that you do for us. I know we don't recognize you often, but sir, you're good at what you do. Okay, so that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. The New Kent Education Foundation is hosting Strives for School on May seventh, so, uh, it's gonna be at Colonial Downs. You go onto the website and sign up for it. It's, I think it starts at eight o'clock.
Just run it, right?
Yep, but you can come out there and cheer as well. So, so please, uh, come donate to that worthwhile event. And also, the Blue Knights, this motorcycle group in, in the county, is doing a Brunswick Stew for Chris Hamlet's brother, Tony Hamlet. He had a severe stroke a while back, and, uh, they're raising some funds for him. So, uh, if you can get your order in by, I think, Wednesday, and the sixteenth, it's ten dollars a quart, and all those proceeds will go to, to Tony Hamlet, and it's organized by Sheriff Howard and, uh, Sheriff McGlocklin. So, and also, I think it was a little confusing on the one fifty-five, uh, questions that Mr. Steers brought up, and maybe Chief Deputy or the Fire Chief can come up and explain, uh, a little bit better.
Yes, sir. Good evening. We did have a meeting this afternoon, and from my understanding, it looks like it's gonna run from Old Forge Road to, Old Forge Road on one fifty-five north, just prior to Kentland Trail. And it sounded like there will be a break from that area to the other side of the interstate, and then they would pick back up and continue all the way to two forty-nine. So, a, and they're anticipating the works.
Thanks for clarifying that, because that was my question.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, a, a, and Chief O'Petten, I were back there, they didn't know it's going the whole length. So it, it sounds like, like Marshall did say, they did have, they've got a hundred and eighty days, I think, once they start, and they are looking to start next Monday if everything falls into line.
And it's my understanding they're gonna put like a, a one-foot shoulder on either side of the road, right?
That's what it sounds like. They're gonna go north, and it sounds like they will be coming back south to.
It's, I, I believe it's a three-foot shoulder. As you, you may recall, years ago, uh, we got, it was about twenty years ago, really, or close to it. We received funding from VDAC for, uh, they, we called it the Courthouse to Courthouse Bike Path. That is, this project just transformed. It's no longer a bike path, it's now a shoulder extension, but it's that same project.
But it's on both sides of the road.
The way it sounded, it was gonna be a little bit added to each side. They're just basically putting a little bit more asphalt in there, so it sounded like they have to do some work to the edge of the road. It didn't sound like they were gonna, they were trying not to do any major ditching or trenching, but it did say that they would have to remove some trees, but, uh, they would do, be, move as minimal as possible. We did also advise them to contact the schools, gave them the superintendent's number, as well as the Director of Transportation, just so they could try to coordinate something with all the bus traffic going through there. And also, they advised they would be putting something out, so we could send something out on social media through the sheriff's office and through the county, alerting parents to allow a little bit extra time traveling one fifty-five. And, and once they get towards that two forty-nine intersection from Route one fifty-five to the, excuse me. Once they, so when they're heading to the school, they would allow for a little bit more time. Once they make that turn, they do think it may impact a little bit of Route two forty-nine. We have also tried to encourage them, if possible, if their schedule will allow it to work, to try to do that some over spring break, so it would minimize some of the, uh, issues with the school traffic.
Thanks for clarifying that.
I could see there was some confusion on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Must not have been. You okay with that, Mr.?
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, next, uh, staff reports. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Several meetings ago, staff was directed to take a look at our Cluster Subdivision Ordinance and come back to you with recommendation, uh, with recommendations for ways to, uh, potentially slow down, um, the amount of growth that we're seeing as a result of Cluster subdivisions that are occurring in, in the county. I kinda looked at this from another perspective, because I don't think our, our overall goal is to stop growth in the county, or say, no growth. But our overall goal in the county is to control growth. We want the county to grow, but we want it to grow in accordance with our Future Land Use Plan. That's part of our comprehensive plan. And unfortunately, the way our current Cluster Subdivision Ordinance is written, we have very little control over how this growth occurs. It's a byright process. It does not come before you for approval. The requirements are pretty lenient and easy to do, and therefore, we're seeing a lot of these subdivisions take place. And we're seeing development in areas of the county, quite frankly, that we want to keep as rural lands per our comprehensive plan. So I have worked with staff, and I have prepared some, uh, changes, and I am recommending some changes to our Cluster Subdivision. And I know I might get to question, as, well, why don't you just don't do it anymore? Cluster subdivisions, we are required to have a Cluster Subdivision Ordinance by state code. Any locality that has experienced more than a ten percent growth rate since the last census is required to have provisions for a Cluster subdivision in your ordinance. We are also required to have a Cluster subdivision that's no more lenient when it comes to calculating density than our subdivision ordinance. Well, than our zoning ordinance, and therefore, I am change, proposing some changes to our zoning ordinance as well. With our subdivision ordinance, and I'm not gonna read through this, I'm just gonna hit the highlights. I've given you copies, so you can review. The major change being proposed is the density calculation is the major change. Currently, our requirement is you take the total amount of land, and you divide it by the minimum lot size that's permitted in the zoning ordinance. Also, um, we require, which the way I read the state code, I'm not sure that our state code allows for this, so it's really something that we have to change. We require that you back out all of your wetlands and environmentally sensitive lands from that calculation, where state code says you have to, you can't back that out. So that is one change. If we do nothing else, uh, we need to look at changing. But I am proposing a density of one house or one lot per ten acres of land. That is a significant change, as opposed to the, uh, one lot for every one point five acres of land that we currently practice. Therefore, a hundred acres, uh, the maximum density would be ten houses. I am also proposing, uh, currently, there's no minimum lot size, but there's no maximum lot size as well. I am proposing to ca, to implement a maximum lot size for Cluster subdivision, a maximum lot size of two acres. The whole intent of Cluster subdivision is to, uh, make lots smaller so you can preserve open space. So I'm proposing to ensure that lots are smaller, that lots be no more than two acres. I'm also proposing that instead of setting aside fifty percent of the land, um, for conservation, I'm proposing that eighty percent of the land be set aside for conservation. Again, keeping intent, keeping in, um, in line with the original intent of the state's Cluster Subdivision Ordinance. I've also decreased, uh, the minimum lot size for a Cluster subdivision. Currently, it's seventy acres. Um, I'm proposing a minimum of fifty acres in order to do a Cluster subdivision. I have also proposed an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is required to get to the density of one acre, one lot per ten acres. I'm proposing to increase the minimum lot area from one point five in A-one zoning district to ten acres. Now, that may seem extreme with the ten-acre minimum lot size for A-one, but really, the one point five acre minimum lot size currently is really a false minimum, because there's no way to get to one point five acres. A byright subdivision in the A-one zoning district is twenty-five acres without public road frontage, and fifteen acres if you're on a public road. The only other way you can subdivide land in A-one is through a parent-track subdivision that has a minimum lot size of two acres, and I'm proposing to continue to allow that exception for parent-track subdivisions and our family subdivisions that has a minimum lot size of one and a half acres. And I'm proposing that we would still allow that as an exception, that you could continue to do family subdivisions with the minimum lot size of an acre and a half. So really, setting the ten-acre minimum lot size for agriculture does not change anything. There is also a grandfather clause that I'm recommending, that if you have an existing lot as of the date that this ordinance is adopted, you can continue to build on that lot, as long as you can meet your setback requirements, which is our current, um, policy now for lots that don't meet the one point five acres. So going forward, it would affect new lots, but again, there's really no way to get to a ten-acre new lot today other than the parent track and family subdivision, which we would continue to allow. So I don't think that the minimum lot size standard increasing will really impact, uh, development in the county. Though, those are the highlights of the changes. I am proposing a change to our boundary line adjustment. And that, that's detailed in here, and that's for, uh, those lots that might be, you're adjusting a twelve-acre parcel with a five-acre buildable lot. Does that mean that the five-acre lot can no longer be buildable? No, we would continue to allow that, and we would continue to allow the boundary line adjustment as well. What we're saying is, uh, the parent lot, or the lot that's above ten acres can't go below ten acres, and the lot that's not ten acres can't be decreased, can't become any more non-conforming. So we would continue to allow boundary line adjustments for smaller lots as, as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did prepare a resolution. If this is something that you would like, and a motion, if this is something that you would like to forward to the Planning Commission, to have them look at it and to receive public comment during the public hearing for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to, instead of moving forward this, I'd like to have a chance to go through this a little more detail before we move it forward to the Planning. this in a little more detail before we move it forward to the planning commission.
Yeah. Ms. Page.
So, I have a question. If it goes to the planning commission, it still comes back to us for a public hearing?
That's fair.
Sorry, what you talking about with the, when you're doing the calculations, you don't have the, the wetlands are not counted? But you said state code requires, is that a change that we can make without, does that have to have a public hearing?
We would have to make, have a public hearing to make that change.
But does that have to go to a planning, does that need to go to the planning commission?
Yes, because it's a change in our subdivision ordinance, which requires planning commission.
Okay. When was the last subdivision approved by this board? That cluster, I don't think, I've been on here 15 years and...
Well, Rock Creek was after Patriots Landing and after the Farms of New Kent.
But that was before, that was, that was Mr. Hill.
2006. I don't recall.
So, all this growth that's happening, I just want everybody to realize that this, the Farms of New Kent, all this stuff that's happening right now was approved in the early, late 90s, early 2000s, and it's finally just catching up. And, you know, these cluster subdivisions are, that's what you're seeing, the new subdivisions that are popping up around the county are the cluster subdivisions that we really don't have a whole lot of control, control over. Ms. Tiller.
If we do send this, when would it go to the planning commission? In April for their meeting?
At the earliest, I believe from speaking with planning, there is a planning commission meeting next Monday where planning could introduce this to the planning commission, but the earliest a public hearing could be conducted would be next month, April meeting.
I was just wondering, Mr. Lockwood said, I mean, if it's going to go to them in April and wouldn't be back to us until May, are you... Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
Anybody have any other comments? Ms. Tiller, you have?
Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R-11-22, appreciate. Text amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinances for the amendment of provisions for open space and cluster subdivisions.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I have one last item to bring before you, which was handed out as well. As you know, with the Advanced Auto Project, we are working with the property owners, SPF Investments, to construct an industrial access road into the property that will serve Auto Zone. Plans have been submitted and are currently being reviewed by the planning department and environmental department and all the reviewing agencies. There are some additional costs that have recently come to bear. Those costs involve the needed purchase of nutrient credits for the construction of this project totaling $68,728. Also, the Virginia Stormwater Management Program fee, which is a fee that is due to the state totaling $1,260 for a total cost of $69,988. I am requesting that this be transferred from our contingency fund and that it be transferred to the Economic Development Authority, who is paying for the engineering for this project.
Anybody have any comments or concerns for Mr. Hathaway on this? We don't have much choice.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Page.
If there's no other discussion, I move to approve the request of transfer of funds totaling $69,988 for net reserve for contingency line item to the Economic Development Authority line item.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other business? Mr. Steers, you? It's up to you.
Okay, I'll go into it. Mr. Chairman, if I could, please pass these down. These are the optimization of the, the new planning transportation advisor that the county is looking to hire. And I had mentioned it earlier, that, I mean, everything we've seen tonight, tonight is the county spending more and more, more money. This is a way we could have a nice program and not have to spend any money. I know the salaries and wages for this position is $80,000 a year, but it doesn't stop there. You've got retirement, you've got health insurance, you've got professional services, advertising, telecommunications, cellular equipment, vehicle insurance, travel, travel dues, association membership dues, vehicle powered equipment, vehicle powered equipment supplies, uniforms, wearing apparel, books and subscriptions. So, really, this $80,000 a year position comes out to be almost $150,000 a year. And I know back when we created, when this board created the broadband committee, we had different residents around the county, several from each district on this committee, and they spent about nine months and they came up with a plan for the county to go forward with broadband countywide. And not only did we listen to that committee, but we adopted their request, and that's what we're using as the model to go forward with broadband countywide. My request is, we could do the same thing with this position. Instead of spending more money, creating a new position, $150,000 a year, in two years, that's $300,000. That's money that could be spent towards road improvements. And what I propose to do is to create a committee comprised of maybe the sheriff, the fire chief, someone from the maintenance, school board, maintenance. We have road reviewers, we have a transportation safety commission. We could create a committee that could meet and discuss the needs of the county, people who live in this county, who know the roads better than anybody else rather than hiring somebody outside the county that's not even know where Courthouse Road is. And I would, I would like to propose that we draw up this committee, and of course, all their recommendations would come to the board of supervisors, and then we would decide where the farms would be expanded. But initially, I thought maybe a board member should serve on the committee, but I think that might be a little unfair. So, I would suggest no board member, board supervisor serve on the committee, but come up with some kind of committee like that and save the taxpayers. And, you know, in $150,000, $300,000, in six years, you spent a million dollars on a position that could have been spent on road improvements, and that's what I'm proposing. Thank you, sir.
One question towards that, and that's fine. I just, would the sheriff or fire and rescue office be responsible for the reporting, project management, the meetings that's involved? I mean, I feel that there has to be a point person to organize this effort. I think it's great to get all those entities involved, and that's always been our plan because we want as much feedback from the public as possible. But I believe that there has to be someone to actually do the work and be accountable and responsible for actually managing the dollars and handling the numerous reports that are required and actually managing the construction projects as well. If we have a point person for that.
I think just like the broadband committee, they had a director in charge, and, you know, this group, once they're, have gotten together, they can decide, pick a chairperson and pick someone that would be in charge of coming back to report to the board supervisors. The money's in the account, it's not going to go anywhere unless we approve it, and then you write the check, right?
Yeah, that's right. No project will be funded without the board's approval.
That's right.
That is correct.
But, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out some ways that instead of the county growing the budget, what, $10 million in one year, you know, and keep growing and growing, is let's see where we can actually start cutting some taxpayers' money. Of course, I'm probably the most fiscal conservative on this board.
Mr. Chairman.
But, I mean, I just, I just, I feel like that is a position that is unwarranted, I really do.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm all with you saving money, Mr. Steers. I think that the burden of responsibility that would fall on the person that would hold that position for reporting to the state how the funds are spent and making sure that everything we spend is in compliance with the Transportation Authority, it's not a part-time job. Not to mention, the person, one of their primary responsibilities would be multiplying the funds we have available by soliciting grants. The grant opportunities that are out there that we're not currently able to pursue, make this cost of the position a small number in comparison to the millions of dollars in grant money that are out there currently that we don't go after because we don't have the resources to do that. So, I think that, you know, having the right person in that position, that the money would be well-spent, having a professional that understands utilizing our money in conjunction with state and federal money that's out there and available, I think you would find that it would be a small price to pay compared to the money that could come in for the projects that we want to do. Rockahawk Road, the kinds of things that we want done in the county that we can't currently get done through VDOT, we will have the opportunity to do some of those things. I'm not talking about maintenance issues, I'm talking about improvement issues. That's what these funds are supposed to be used for. So, I think that moving forward and finding the right person for this position is critical to us multiplying the funds that are available, not, not just spending the money that we get.
And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Lockwood, but believe me, Rick O'Pat knows how to write grants. He's proven it to this board.
I agree.
Anybody from the sheriff's department, they know.
I agree.
They take a Harvard graduate to figure out where the money is and then write for it.
And I think that's the big difference is, you know, when you, when you get into their specialized aspects of fire and rescue and law enforcement, that they understand where those grants are available. I'm sure they could seek them out, but do we really want to burden our sheriff and our fire chief with, with road responsibilities at this point? So, I think that, you know, we've got people that specialize in those categories, and I think for the type of money that's available that we would be spending, that, that, that requires a specialist as well. I'm good.
Thank you. I know we had advertised this position, and it was my understanding that the person turned it down, is that correct or not?
We've advertised, there's two top candidates right now. The top candidate did not accept the job. They were looking for an opportunity to work from home, which currently, the county does not have a policy to allow someone to work from home. And, you know, I'm a little old school, I guess, on that too. I mean, as public servants, we should be here serving the public. So, that top candidate declined, but we do have another candidate that was just as qualified, who we're making an offer to.
Has the offer been made?
Offer has not been made yet. I just received from the first candidate their formal denial of our offer, so, yes.
Well, Mr. Hathaway, I sat in on that interview committee, and it was the second one that you're talking about who wanted to work from home.
The gentleman.
No, the lady from Suffolk. She was...
Well, you're right. During the interview, he did not mention wanting to work from home, but after the job offer was made, then that came up and that was a request that he presented, and we considered it. You know, we told him, if you have something going on, some life issues going on right now, we could potentially do it for a set amount of time, but an ongoing arrangement for him to work from home was not acceptable.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but the second candidate from Suffolk, that was the first question that she asked us was, could she do teleconferencing from home?
She asked that.
I think she's going to be the same way.
She, she may. She did ask that, but she didn't give me the opinion that that was a requirement for her accepting the job. She asked, was that an option? I have had some correspondence with her since. I do know that she is currently looking for housing arrangements in this area to shorten that commute, so I'm not sure if that's going to be a requirement for her.
I don't know, it's a pleasure of the board, but our budget retreat next week, would the board, do they still want to move forward on this position, or do you want to get us some update of what the qualifications, of what this job really does entail, getting into the depth of it and making a case?
Yeah, I mean, most, most definitely. We have a job description, and I can definitely provide you with that. And I just want to be clear, I'm not anti against what was recommended. I just feel that there needs to be a point person for this, and if it's the sheriff's department or fire and rescue, that's fine.
I can tell you, they don't want to do that. Right? How the board feels about that?
Mr.?
Ms. Page?
Mr. Chairman, as someone that attends 11 transportation meetings a month, I'm telling you that there's, that is a requirement as well. I, nobody goes through the budget any more than I do to try to save every cent that we can save, but it is more than just being in New Kent County. It is just, it's more than just grants. It is knowing all of the state and federal regulations that has to go with the spending of the Central Virginia Transportation Authority funds that is, that was formed through legislation, and it is inhaling $2 to $4 million. I don't think that we have set up in our county for a particular group to do that. I think that we included the road viewers who had, through my term, never met. We extended that to include, at the request of board, to include the safety, members of the safety committee, and it is not, it is, it is, it is a position that will be funded through the county, but it is a position that is funded through an organization that designated the funds, and in the designated funds, not only a transportation director, but a transportation department can be set up. And I, I remember when New Kent County was in control of our roads in New Kent County, and the roads were turned over to VDOT, and so we see where we are now. But, this is not a position that we can give a responsibility, and I'm not saying that fire and rescue is not qualified, I'm not saying that the sheriff's department is not qualified, and I'm not saying that we don't have citizens that are qualified, but they didn't apply for the job. and I'm not saying that we don't have citizens that are qualified, but they didn't apply for the job. And so I would indeed agree with that chair. If you want me to get more information, I absolutely will. And we can discuss today our budget retreat. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you go back to the presentation that Thrive Virginia made tonight, on their third slide, they've said an annual budget of $2.5 million, serving 2,000 customers annually, governed by a volunteer board of directors.
That's not accountable, that's not accountable.
Oh, I know it not.
So do, do we want to wait to get some more detail? What's the pleasure of the board? They want to wait to get some more detail at the budget retreat or move forward?
I'm gonna say move forward, just a way for the budget retreat.
Okay. All right.
Hathaway, if you could just let the second candidate know that we're working on it. Thank you.
All right. Any other, other business? All right, next, appointments delegated by districts. Anybody have any?
I don't have any.
I move to appoint Larry Clark as District 1's representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a four-year term beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2025. Any others? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, appointments not delegated by districts. Anybody have any?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Jackie Randall as the airlock representative to the board of road viewers to complete a term ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments not delegated by district?
Mr. Steers? Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, appointments of regional boards and commissions. Anybody have anything else? All right, our next regular scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 11, 2022, and the next work session at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, March 30, 2022, both in the boardroom of the county administration building. The board will also meet for a budget retreat at 9:00 AM on March 24, 2022 at the ordinary at 12,000 New Kent Highway. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Adjourn.